Is it now?[5.37][5.37](laughter) Thank you. Did you all hear what I said at the beginning? In the public hearing session, an application or a group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions, if any. Members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beat will indicate one minute left to speak. And at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application. Results of the voting can be learned from the planning division. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. Please turn off all cell phones at this point. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking.
Madam Chairman, before we go into the agenda, instead of addressing the fact that this is Rick Olson's last meeting, at the end of this meeting, when there's nobody in this room, I'd like to take a moment now to address that. Rick has been with the city for, I think, 31 years. I first met Rick when, in 1994, when I was added with Ms. Rich to the planning commission. I worked with Rick for six or seven years until I resigned from the planning commission in 2000 or 2001. At that time, I became an attorney representing people coming before the commission, behind this podium, and worked with Rick on my client's applications, trying to get help from him, advice, information, and he was always 100% professional and courteous. And then, five years ago, I took over this position as the attorney for the planning commission and have dealt with Rick on an everyday basis. It's not a day goes by I don't get an email or a phone call from Rick discussing city business. The service that he has provided to the city, business community, the real estate community has been nothing but fantastic, 100% professional, and I just wanted to acknowledge his service to this board, to this city, and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. At this time, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Richard L. Olson began his career with the City of Mobile as planning technician on February 16, 1987, and whereas the City of Mobile has undergone many changes during the past 31 years, including several amendments to the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, and whereas due to the numerous amendments, Richard has tirelessly advocated for a new comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, both of which many elements have already been adopted, and further action is currently underway, and whereas Richard has devoted his career to improving the quality of life for all citizens of Mobile, as a past member of the Historic Development Commission, and as a staff member serving the planning commission, Board of Zoning Adjustment, Tree Commission, and Mobile City Council, and whereas during his 31-year career with the City of Mobile, in addition to advocating for the importance of regulatory and long-range planning, Richard has trained dozens of employees on the importance of planning, sharing his vast knowledge and experience with the day's and tomorrow's leaders. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mobile City Planning Commission does hereby acknowledge the 31-year career of Richard L. Olson and express deep appreciation and gratitude for his outstanding service provided to the City of Mobile, its businesses, and its residences. Done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, this 15th day of March 2018. And on a personal note, thank you, Rick, for all the help you have given us since I've been doing this. At this time, I'm going to call roll. Ms. Jennifer Denson.
Here.
Mr. John Vallas.
Here.
Ms. Kena Andrews.
Here.
Ms. Beth Rich.
Here.
Mr. Alan Cameron.
Here.
And I'm Leva Lightman.[423.97][423.97](noise) (inaudible) on our agenda today is 1204 Hillcrest Road. The staff has recommended approval of the proposal quest. Is the applicant present and in agreement with all the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in counter? Thank you very much. Second thing on our agenda is 5130 Travis Road. This application has been recommended for tentative approval. The applicant present and in agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Number three, 1356 Repole Road, A and 1355 Repole Road. Alabama's defined subdivision. Mr. Cameron has indicated that he has refused on this one. Is the applicant present and in agreement?
Madam Chair, since we do not have a quorum at this point because of the recusal, the commission cannot hear this application today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Olson. If we do not have a quorum on this application, it will be held over until the April 5 meeting. At which time, it will be taken up. Number four, revenue subdivision. Mr. Cameron has refused. The same circumstance applies because we do not have a quorum on this. We will not hear this today, so we will take it up on our session on April 5. Thank you very much. Number five.
Quick question for staff. So we're not allowed to hear any public comment if there's no quorum?
That's correct. If there's not a quorum, you can't even hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Number five. Has the West Terminus of Nicholas Drive got to place at Magnolia Grove subdivision? Is the applicant present and in agreement with the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in counter? Yes, sir. Come on down, please.
My name is Frank Bergen, B-E-R-G-A-N. I live at 2508 Legends Row, Mobile, Alabama, 36618. The developer first applied for approval to develop this site in 2016 and was granted tentative approval on the 16th of September for 17 lots. No action was ever taken by Mr. Rosen, so he is back before you today to develop 18 lots on the same 4.4 acres, which was originally approved for 17 lots. Please note that the size of the lots is very small in comparison to the lots of existing homes that are adjacent to the Rosen property. The largest lot in the Rosen subdivision is the common area, which is approximately 10,000 square feet, with house lots being approximately 7,000 feet, whereas the average size of lots in Legends 1, Legends 2, and Magnolia Village is between 10,000 and 12,000 square feet. The Rosen lot size will negatively impact the property values in Legends 1, 2, and Magnolia Village. Next, the storm water runoff into the storm drains in the street is going to negatively impact Legends 1 and their detention pond. Water from the street storm drains will connect to the existing storm drains in Legends 2, which flow downhill into Legends 1 and into the Legends 1 detention pond, which the Legends 1 Homeowners Association is required to keep and maintain. This will put an additional stress on the Legends 1 detention pond and create a burden for more financial input by the homeowners of the Legends 1 subdivision. The Legend 1 homeowners spend approximately $2,000 to $2,500 a year maintaining the detention pond, keeping the grass cut, ensuring that erosion is repaired, and clearing the lot area. It would only be fair, if the Rosen subdivision is approved, that the Rosen subdivision homeowners association and the developer at the outset be required by this board to contribute to the cost of the maintenance of the Legends 1 detention pond. Additionally, there are concerns about proposed detention ponds in Jack's Place and whether it will leach water into the ground, impacting the homes and the properties on the south and east side of the property. If you look at the topography, Jack's Place proposed development is higher in elevation than the Legends 1 subdivision and portions of the Legends 2 subdivision. So this water leaching into the ground will have a negative impact on the substructure and the supporting columns for the utilities and for homes therein. We ask that if you must decide to approve this subdivision, that you decrease the number of houses located on the property, because the homes adjacent to it are on large pieces of property, and this is a small piece of property, and will negatively affect home values. And we would also request, if you approve this subdivision, that the type of building that you approve be similar to the brick homes located in Legends 1, Legends 2, and Magnolia Village. Thank you for your time and interest.
Thank you so much, Mr. Olson. Any ones here speak in opposition to this? Yes, sir.
Richard, while they come down, he commented that the new plat was 18 lots, but what we're looking at is 17. Is the detention area just shown as a lot, and maybe there's some confusion?
Yes, sir. That's how it was counted, how it was counted, is because that was how it was shown, but it's not truly, if it's a common area, it's not truly a lot for development.
Yes, sir.
My name is CJ Johnson. I reside at 2507 Legend Row, Mobile, Alabama, 36618. Disapprove the new subdivision due to the following. I've been a homeowner since 2006, and to put some small houses back there would be negative impact on the area of the subdivision. I talked to the revenue department this morning, and they say it's only four acres, it's only four acres back there, but they say it's 4.4. I did confirm there. They said, no, it's no more than four acres back there, so I don't know why they got 4.4 acres that put 18 houses on it. They said it would be detrimental to put those small houses back in their subdivision. We got high quality houses back there, and I see no need to put those low-end houses back there. Maybe 10 houses? We agree with that, but no more than 10. If we put 10 houses back there, we'd be in the same quality standards that the houses in there right now. If you look at the past development back there, they wasn't compliant with this subdivision to make all houses in standard sizes and living condition. You put those little houses back there, we're going to have more crime, more people running up down the highway. Right now, they still got a lot of music back there. We've got a lot of people running down the streets all time of day and all time of night, which will decrease our value size. So we'd be there if you bring these little houses in the neighborhood. I don't understand why they want to put that. Now, Mr. Rosen, he lived in a house $489,000, Ocean Spring. No small houses around his neighborhood, so I don't understand why. He want to leave Ocean Spring and bring those type of house in a golf course area, which is well-developed, and put those little houses back there. The average price that he want to put his houses to is anywhere from $299,000, $315,000, $260,000 houses, and he want to bring those small houses next to the neighborhood, which I totally disagree. There's no need to put those small houses in the highly-developed community as Magnolia Grove in a senior neighborhood in a golf course area. It's not realistic. I understand who want to do, make a quick dollar, but maybe in another neighborhood, but not in Magnolia Grove. We have championship golf courts come through that neighborhood, and you bring these little houses in there is not worth the time and effort to bring them in there. 10 houses? Yes, but no more than 10. We only got four acres back there, and you want to put all those little houses back there, which I disagree. And also, we did not get a ruling on that they were going to put those subdivision back there. They just all of a sudden just start popping up. No notice was sent out to none of the tenants in the neighborhood, no sign posted, nothing like that. I request that this be disapproved due to the fact that smaller houses come into a substantial large neighborhood is no way to be seen. 10 houses? The LoA, Legend 1 and Legend 2 agree with, provided they meet the same standards and quality. Thank you very much.
Please hold the record plate that Mr. Hamberger is present. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Would the proponent like to make a response?
My name is Max Vaughn, Gooden Mills and Kaywood. Engineer for this project, like to kind of address some of the things that were mentioned in terms of the design and the drainage on the site. I do want to clarify, and I believe you mentioned it earlier, that the number of lots are the same number of lots that was presented previously, and the plat that was presented is the same plat that's being presented to you today that was previously approved. So it is 17 lots with the common space for the detention area. And as the issues with drainage were mentioned, the development for this site will contain its own detention facility. That's what the common space parcel is for. That drainage facility will detain for the pre-existing conditions that are currently operating on the site and flowing downhill the way gravity has directed them to, and will be released in the same direction, in the same manner as they are existing. It's a city requirement, and that is why that detention pond is being built, and the maintenance of that pond will be the responsibility of the development. It will not be an impact on the surrounding neighborhood. So they'll be maintaining their own facility within their development, just like the surrounding neighborhood is doing with their ponds and their maintenance. So that cost will be the same. Some issues were brought up about the potential of leaching of drainage from that pond. That pond is going to be a dry pond, so it will be dry when it's not raining. It's not going to hold water that will constantly be dispersing through the soils around it. It will just detain the water during the storms, and then it will release that water back at that predetermined or predeveloped rate. And so I do not think that that will be an issue of any kind. I believe that's all the questions.
How is it discharged when it's released? Is it released through their system?
Yes. Right now, the water flows off the site in lots of different places, and some of that water flows off to, through Nicholas Drive and the existing drainage system. It flows over land into that system, and it flows through that at the existing conditions. So our plan is to capture that water within the detention pond, and we're going to tie into the system that it's still going to, and we're going to release it at the same rate that it's going to today. So it's not going to be diverting water or impacting with higher flows. That's the purpose of that detention pond, is to capture that water and release it at the existing rate. So there will not be a burden on the adjacent neighborhood.
And I know there was a letter passed around, but what's about the average size lot per square foot?
The average lot size is...
The letter, I think, said 10,000 square feet, is that? But I don't know where the letter went.
I just looked at the plat before the meeting began. The minimum lot size that they have is by the cul-de-sac, and they're about just over 7,200 square feet. The typical lot size is going to be 7,900 square feet for the bulk of the development.
Can you go to the bathroom from the commission?
I do. I know this is a repeat because of not acting on the one that was passed before. Were there conversations, to your knowledge, with the residents nearby this development to show plans? We can't get into the type of materials that you'll use in the build, the square footage that you'll have of the house, but in listening to the residents, they're concerned about, you know, compatibility, which is something this commission can look into when looking at nearby subdivisions. So do you know of any of that place?
Well, Mr. Rosen can speak towards the houses themselves and what the plans are for the houses, if you all would like. Would you all like to?
It'd be interesting information, but it's not anything that we would mandate. But I would hope that that communication, so if it helps to come forward, I would like to hear that.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jack Rosen, the developer, and I just want to set some minds at ease here. We've had a tumultuous year, and the housing that adjoins this neighborhood is classic, and it is part of a wonderful golfing community. And the Legends, as it's called, is set up as a traditional home neighborhood, or the style of the home is traditional. And it is such that we have no desire to change anything about that neighborhood. And in fact, what I have done is taken the existing HOA for the Magnolia Grove subdivisions and basically mirrored that word for word when I could, where it applied, whereas they have three neighborhoods, I only have one. So a lot of that was omitted. But all of the homes in Jack's Place will be traditional style and will be approximately the same square footage as what's adjoining it on Nicholas Drive. So I don't have a copy of that HOA, the new HOA for our neighborhood, available yet. It's still in the drafting stage, but it will be very acceptable, I have a feeling, and they'll be happy with every home that goes in that place.
Have you had any meetings with the residents in the nearby units?
I've only talked to the two residents that are next to the property.
That got the letter, right. And that's all that's required. I don't want anyone to think it's only a budding properties for subdivision, but oftentimes, because, you know, people have a vested interest on where they live and the quality that they've sought out, it's really important to talk to more than just one or two that got your letter.
Exactly.
I think that goes a very long way.
Also, in the plans, just as in the HOA for Magnolia Grove subdivisions, we will have a website with the HOA on it and the homes standard that will be built on those lots. And they won't be able to tell the difference between the Legends and Jack's Place at Magnolia.
Other than the size of the property itself? Each individual property?
Right. The property is above the minimum requirement for the Legends, so I'm not concerned about the minimum requirement on the property size, but the average yard size will be diminished, just not the home. The home will be a full-size home. It'll be beautiful. It'll be just like what's in the neighborhood.
Nick, let me ask you a question before you step in. Mr. Berger requested, you know, he made a comment that he would like to see them contribute to their maintenance of their pond, but if the discharge is, not that we've ever done that, but if the discharge is not going to be increased, and it would really just be unreasonable for us to require any additional maintenance downstream.
We can't require that. I mean, the covenants that are associated with the individual subdivisions tie those lots to a particular retention pond, and if he's not increasing the retention, yeah, we can't make him do it. I'm glad...
I wanted him to hear that.
And I'm glad the question was answered, that the detention pond is planned to be tied to the closed drainage system. It's not going to be a discharge that open cheap flows?
That's correct.
Okay. It looks like at the end of Nicholas, there might be an inlet right there, and I guess that's...
That's correct. We're going to tie it to the existing storm drain that's essentially a couple hundred feet into Nicholas Drive. There's not any storm pipes stubbed out to the property, so we're going to have to go through the existing public right-of-way to tie to that through our system.
Okay.
The detention system.
And to answer this, ask this question for me, or answer this question for me. Did you go back in and look at the drainage system when it was designed for Nicholas Drive to make sure that it was accommodating that volume coming to it?
Yes, we have. We've got a design that, you know, we're prepared to submit to you that shows that system, the drainage calculations that aren't an impact to the existing system throughout, all predeveloped flows being maintained. We have that, and we're prepared to submit that to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to another steps.
We should go back and do the ones... Can we go back and do the ones that we had to not listen to?
Those people left.
They are left. Oh, ouch. Okay, sorry. No, no, they wouldn't. I didn't realize they left.
4130, 4132, 4134, Government Street. I think it's actually Government Road, I'm going to sort of do that. This has been recommended for a holdover until May 3rd. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Are you in agreement with that recommendation?
I'm sure I could be.
Are you in agreement with the recommendation for holdover until May 3rd?
I'm not. The holdover, I didn't know, but I do ask for the holdover.
The city staff recommended the holdover.
Yes.
subdivisions tie those lots to a particular retention pond. And if he's not increasing the retention, yeah, we can't make him do it. I'm glad...
I wanted him to hear that.
And I'm glad the question was answered, that the detention pond is planned to be tied to the closed drainage system. It's not going to be a discharge that open cheap flows?
That's correct.
Okay. It looks like at the end of Nicholas, there might be an inlet right there, and I guess that's...
That's correct. We're going to tie it to the existing storm drain that's essentially a couple hundred feet into Nicholas Drive. There's not any storm pipes stubbed out to the property. So we're going to have to go through the existing public right-of-way to tie to that through our system.
Okay, I'm with you.
The detention system.
And to answer this, ask this question for me, or answer this question for me. Did you go back in and look at the drainage system when it was designed for Nicholas Drive to make sure that it was accommodating that volume coming to it?
Yes, we have. We've got a design that, you know, we're prepared to submit to you that shows that system, the drainage calculations that aren't an impact to the existing system throughout, all pre-developed flows being maintained. We have that, and we're prepared to submit that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are going to move on to number six.
We should go back and do the ones... Can we go back and do the ones that we had to not listen to?
Those people left.
Oh, ouch. Okay, sorry. No, no, they wouldn't. I didn't realize they left. Makes sense.
4132, 4134, 4134, Government Street. I think it's actually Government Street. This has been recommended for a holdover until May 3rd. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Are you in agreement with that recommendation?
I'm sure I could be.
Are you in agreement with the recommendation for a holdover until May 3rd?
I'm not. The holdover, I didn't know. I knew that, but the holdover...
The city staff recommended the holdover.
Yes. Then we're just going to leave it there.
Thank you. It will most likely be held over. If there is anyone here today that would like to speak in favor of this application, it'll be heard again on May the 3rd. But if you'd like to go ahead and speak today, you certainly can. If there's anyone here to speak in opposition to this application, just that came today, and you'd like to speak today, you're welcome to. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Number seven, 8500 Goldmine Road North, Goldmine Oaks Subdivision. This application has been recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you. We'll move on to number eight. 2700 First Avenue, Park of Safety. This application has been recommended for approval for a waiver of sidewalk. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the recommendation? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of it? Anyone here to speak against it? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Olson, I didn't see where you got that.
Sorry, you skipped number eight.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I skipped number eight. I'm so sorry.
Application.
We'll go back to number eight, and then we'll come back to number nine. Number eight, 1651 North Shepherd Road. This application has been recommended for a holdover to April 19th. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the holdover? He has indicated that he is so. I apologize if it could be you. Is there anyone here today, and you would like to speak in favor of this application? It will be most likely held over. Is there anyone here present today that would like to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. Now we will move to number nine. 2700 First Avenue. The applicant has indicated he is in agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here that would like to speak against it? Thank you. Number 10, north side of Moffitt Service Road, Monroe Subdivision. It has been recommended for tentative approval. The applicant has indicated he is in agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone present that would like to speak against it? Thank you. Number 11, Lone Oak Subdivision, 901, 903, 907, and 911 Dolphin Street, and 26, 10, and 14 South Broad Street. This has been recommended for a holdover until April 19th. Mr. Berger?
You were moving too fast. I had to slow you down. Not much. We were going to accept the, we still are going to accept the holdover. But the staff, by these recommendations, is forcing the owner to include property into this application that they don't want to include. They're saying revision subdivision application to include 918, 920, and 9... Conti Street, and 919 Dolphin Street. Same thing in the PUD. And the reason, we don't need labels, we don't need adjacent owners. We want to stay right where we are. The two properties on Conti Street, they're residential. This is commercial. They need a six-foot privacy fence separating the two. The 919 is a commercial property. We're commercial. A fence is not required there. They do own those properties, but they don't want to include them in this application. Wasn't submitted that way, and I don't see how the city can force them to include them.
We can easily address why those were part of the staff recommendation. As far as 919 Dolphin Street, previously, there was a driveway on the west side. Well, east side went around. Now, the access doesn't do that, and it's accessed via the 911 Dolphin Street site.
It does have a driveway, but it is accessed via the...
I do. And for the two residential properties on Conti Street, and I believe one of the neighbors is here, they are used currently. There is a gate along the east property line of the easternmost residential property and along the rear of the two properties. One of them stays open all the time. And there appear to be some reserved parking spaces.
Well, I think in the staff report, it mentioned removing the gates and fencing, which, okay, if that needs to be done, that can be done.
What, taking them out of the, not including them in your footprint?
That's right, cutting that piece of property out.
And making the fence solid so there are no gates into those...
Yeah, I think that's what the staff report mentioned in there, in the explanation, recommend, whatever.
Then that would need to be added to the PUD.
But revision of the preliminary plat to reflect dedication along Broad Street, I will challenge that in the next one. That's the only other thing. You take out all the ones about including those properties. There's very little left in there, but we can address it in whatever that meeting, April 19th. Everything due by March 19th. I'll make what revisions.
You were suggesting showing the fence without a gate, right?
I don't think there's a gate showing on my plat, but I'll check it. I'll put six-foot privacy fence.
And...
Wait, you'll be here in a minute. Yeah, the neighbor is here. So that's all I had, was to eliminate forcing them to include those three properties.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Is there anyone here who's speaking in favor of this application other than Mr. Berger? It will be most likely held over, but if there is anyone present today who's speaking in opposition to it, we'll hear it again on April the 19th. I'd like to speak, but I mean, absolutely.
My name is Catherine Flowers. I live at 922 Conti. And we spoke in opposition of it three or four years ago, and we're the only ones, really, that spoke against it. We live right there, next to 918 and 920, and the buildings have been in terrible shape. And they probably don't like me because I've complained so much. But they finally, they have fixed them up, but they've used them, and they are still residential. And we'd like to have that buffer, because we have a nice backyard. My husband's the director of All Saints. We entertain. It's just a problem. And I've had lots of problems, and they won't communicate with us. And I'm for the IMs fixing up all the other, but I'd like that buffer, because there's just not much. They cut every tree on both those properties, and it's just an eyesore. And we would like to have that buffer. And I just, one reason I wanted to speak today is because I want to make sure that's heard. They want a parking lot, and I don't want it rezoned, because I don't want a parking lot there. They've got other parking. And I want to, you know, they're saying they don't want it in the PUD, that the city's forcing them. I don't think y'all are forcing them. You're just saying, if you're going to use them, you know, if you aren't going to use them, the fence needs to be, and it's open. There's two gates that are open all the time. There's another portion right next to my back fence on the east side that has been pulled down. I guess it was rotten. And they even threw a four-by-four post over and knocked a hole in my workshop that's back there. So I just, and I can't, they put a fence between the two properties that's eight feet, and I can't get my storm door, storm window on my dining room open to even clean my window. So I just would like y'all to know that the homeowners would like to keep it residential.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here today that would like to speak against this application? Thank you very much. It will be heard.
Can I just clarify something on this application? It's already zoned commercial. It's not going from a residential to a commercial.
918 and 920 are not the residential.
Oh, I understand. Okay, never mind. Got it. Because then it would read different if it was included. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to number 12, which is Longleaf Gates Subdivision. It has been recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the recommendation? The applicant is not present. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here to speak against this application? Thank you. Number 13, 650 and 686, White Forest Drive, Longleaf Gates Subdivision, 62. Is the applicant present? He is not present. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Yes, sir.
I'm Don Wilkins. I'm with co-bankor Charles Hayes Real Estate, 1120 Hillcrest Road. I represent the seller of the five-acre parcel north of Longleaf Gates and to the west of this proposed development. My property owner is John Harris. His property now is landlocked, and I talked to this last time this was up for review and approval. He's landlocked in this, that's correct, that's the right parcel. If this subdivision is put in without access to the east, that'll permanently landlock him from that direction. He's landlocked to the north, and he's landlocked to the south by the Longleaf Gate subdivision. And to the west, he's landlocked by D. R. Horton property, which is also the developer of the property, subject property today. So because he's landlocked and hasn't been able to negotiate anything with the developer to provide access, he's opposed to the subdivision the way it's laid out. He needs access. He needs a 50-foot-wide access to develop it. His property is zoned, I think, V3, and we're prevented at this point from selling the property because we can't get a title policy on a landlocked property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Is there anyone else present today?
Just one minute. I'm sorry. Why, Mr. Wilkins is still here? So did the previous plan that we looked at a few months ago include this stubout, which is, I know, north of his five acres? But did that plan also show this Maggie Drive, or did not?
And the plan even before that showed that there was the stubout to the properties to the west at that location for emergency access only.
So the problem is this common area, there's really wetlands, not common area that's being used to any benefit of the neighborhood, correct?
It's floodland, isn't it?
Well, the topography in the common area wetlands in this area would make it more challenging to provide access. But unless access can be provided from Lloyd's Lane onto these landlocked properties, their only other choice is going to be through the private development.
And the applicant's not here. Right?
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Looking to move on to number 14.
What's number 14? I don't think we have a 14, do we?
I'm so sorry. We don't have a 14.
I was going to say.
Thank you all very much, Berger. Moving now, moving to the deliberation phase. Number one, Buffalo Forest Road.
Move for approval, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
In favor?
I would just, wait a minute. I just want to make sure about something. I know that they had to come back because of a condition that required fencing, where the homeowners association that they abut was not interested in it. So does this speak to that as not being required now?
Yes.
So we're good?
No, but one thing, please, and I meant to send something out before the meeting today. When an application is either a planning approval or a PUD, and there's the findings of fact, the motion should actually include that you adopt the findings of fact as recommended by staff and move to approve the application as recommended, or whatever your motion, whatever you're choosing to do.
Okay. But I just, like, right now, I was more interested in getting that little tweak that we know was the issue of why they were returning. So that's, now, if you want to make your motion...
Do I make a motion of approval subject to the findings of fact, or not necessarily subject to?
Adopting the findings of fact and approve as recommended. So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any of us... Number three and number four have been... Does that kind of motion to hold over, or are they hold over by procedure?
They would hold over by procedure, since there was not a quorum. So they will automatically be on the April 5th agenda.
I have a question for staff about that. Since they were recommended for a holdover this time, when they come up at the April 5th meeting, will this holdover recommendation remain the same?
Potentially, yes. Unless something changes between now and April 5. I would say that the staff recommendation would be the same. But I'll let Mr. Hoffman address that since I won't be here. Well, since the typical procedure has been to hold over the staff report as written for the meeting, we would hold with that procedure. However, they can provide additional information, which I'm sure they will attempt to do, to address the issues mentioned in the report.
Because my question really is, if the planning commission doesn't act on it within 30 days, does that automatic approval come into play since we did not have a quorum?
No, since you didn't hear it, that would not come into play. It would only be if it was actually presented to you.
Okay.
And that did not occur, because you did not have a quorum.
Thank you.
And I have a question. How does the community find out about the new date? Do they have to seek out? Because there are obviously quite a few people here who have an opinion.
We do not send out notices on something like this. If they are interested, that would be something, and I believe we did receive some calls, so they would need to check with the office.
Would it be possible to reply to those who emailed this specific agenda item, just to let them know, and perhaps they could let their neighbors know as well, or?
Yes. If we have received emails regarding these applications, we can write back to them and let them know.
All right, thank you.
And we did, in that portion, indicated that it's due. My question is, do they now have to get their materials to you to have it actually entered on April 5th, back up their March 28th date of week?
We didn't act on it.
Well, we can't change any of the information in there. And, you know, even if they did get us information sooner than that, we really can't change the staff report for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Application number five, West Remnant, Nicholas Drive, North, Jack's Place.
Can we discuss as opposed to make a motion?
Well, we can't change any of the information in there and, you know, even if they did get us information sooner than that, we really can't change the staff report for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Um, application number five, West Terminus, Nicholas Drive North, Jack's Place.
Can, can we discuss as opposed to make a motion? I know it's a subdivision, so it's not going off of...
Chair, are you okay with that? Just, can we just talk about it before somebody makes a motion?
Yeah, I was hoping so. Um, and this is to the staff. One of the items that we can look at is compatibility. And that came across as far as the size of the lots compared to what is in other units. This will appear to be, um, by the naked eye, a continuation of units. Was there any thought about, uh, working with the, with the applicant about having less lot so that it would be more in keeping with the units that it's now going to egress and ingress through?
There, there really wasn't that, necessarily that consideration because they're not requesting or they're not reducing setbacks. So driving by, it's going to look like a regular, or lots in the other subdivision, rest of the subdivision. You know, when you take into consideration they're meeting front and side yard setbacks, the depth, the rear yard is what's being reduced. It's not necessarily something that's going to be that visible to anyone else.
What are the minimums, side yard?
The minimum is eight and 12, or for a total of 20. Or you could do 10 and 10, so-
That's everywhere.
Yes.
Right, but the average lot size within the units prior to this one were between 10,000 and 12,000. And this is an average of 7,000 or-
7,900.
79, because 72 is the minimum standard you could have.
Correct.
So this is a little bit above minimum.
Yes, ma'am.
And yet the others, you know, exceed it.
But I thought there was other, uh, subdivisions out there that had smaller lots. I mean, maybe not in the Legends, but I mean-
It's, it's further to the east, but let me point out that on the plat that I have before me for the Legends, uh, if you look at the lots that front onto Legends Row, uh, while they are 80 feet wide by 150 feet deep, as a typical size of the property, if you look then on the lots proposed on the Nicholas Drive North as part of Jack's Place, they would be only 70 feet wide, so they're 10 feet narrower than, uh, on Legends Row. And then they're only about 112 feet deep. So they're going to be 10 feet narrower than you would typically see when driving in on Legends Row.
Which isn't very noticeable.
Right, and then they'll be about, you know, 40 feet less deep, so the depth issue is not something you'll be able to see from the street necessarily. And of course, site coverage allowed in an R1 single-family district is 35%. So with a lot size of about 7,200 square feet, you can have a footprint of buildable area of about 2,500 square feet. And that's just for one story.
And I know we ca- this is not a PUD. It didn't come on as a PUD, so we're not talking about building materials or anything.
So, I'm, I'm, I can make a motion. I don't have to do the statement of facts or just a subdivision.
It's just a subdivision.
I move for approval, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six. All in favor of closing the record maker? All in favor of closing the record maker?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven, 8500 Golden Line Road, North.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation.
Motion had been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, 1651 North Chilander Road. Um, which has been recommended for a holdover until April 19th.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Will be held over and heard on April 19th. 2,700 First Avenue, number nine. Recommended for approval.
Make a motion to approve according to staff recommendation.
Second.
All the properly moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 10, the north side of House and Market Road, Central subdivision. Recommended for technical approval.
It's a zoning issue, too.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation.
Got to find the facts. This is a rezoning, isn't it, too? Or we're just doing-
There's only planning approval in PUD.
Okay. Thought it was, which number are we on?
10.
Number 10.
It's a zoning. It says it's a zoning.
But we only have to do that for planning and PUD. You don't have to do it for just zoning and subdivision.
Right.
Fast learner.
This one's saying it's a rezoning, so doesn't it have to be on facts?
That's because it's only a recommendation. The city council has the final determination.
Oh, I see. Okay, what, what are, but you do have the facts listed, so when it moves forward? Or is that up to the city council attorney to find the facts? How are you leaving that?
I don't see.
Because that was one that, you know, we still, we should have facts in why we're rezoning, I would think.
I think that's referenced in the report. It's, it's not in the recommendation, but-
Okay.
Well, it is referenced in the report, the four conditions for rezoning. That there's an error, there's a change in conditions, there's a subdivision of land that makes it necessary and desirable, and, um, need for more locations for business.
Okay, well, that's bigger than that down there.
I think we first and second, or?
Yes, you did.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 11, has been recommended for a holdover until April 19th. I will make that motion.
Second.
Uh, properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be held over and for, um, April 19th. Number 12. Longleaf Gates subdivision 61.
And this was where the-
Findings of fact.
The applicant was not present.
Was not present. Mr. Wilson, uh, procedurally?
That was for 13, I believe. This is number for both?
I thought it was 12 and 13.
Yeah.
Yeah, but 12, there was no discussion. Thir- Mr. Wilkins spoke on 13, but nothing, no, there was no public discussion on 12. So I'll, I'll move, subject to staff recommendations, move for approval.
Second.
Madam Chairman, can I make one comment if I might? Um, the engineer did reach out to me yesterday and had a comment about the, uh, driveway restrictions on the plat. It's, uh, limited to one curb cut, uh, to the alley in the rear. Um, given that it's private streets and they are small lots, traffic engineering has no purview over the curb cuts. Um, so it's, there's a, there's a recommendation to have a, a note on the plat to limit the curb cuts, uh, to be approved by traffic engineering, but there's no requirement for them to come to us whatsoever. We signed the plat, but once the houses start getting built, it's out of our hands. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't know that any of these departments represented here will even see them. It'll be a building permit only. Um, and it's primarily because it's a private street. So the, um, engineer was trying to, um, see if he could get that lifted. Uh, it sounded like most of the lots in that area, and I have not looked, but he had indicated that most of the lots out there, even though there may be an alley, uh, they have the frontage, uh, the garages on the front and don't always utilize the alley. So they would want, they wanted that option. The message that I got from them, for whatever you want to take it as.
And they didn't come to the meeting?
And they didn't come, so.
And I would add that when we have looked at some of the houses during permits, um, if we looked at the aerial photos, some of the houses that have the option of accessing an alley did put in a driveway to the alley. Well, most of the other ones appear to have a driveway that just goes to the street that's in front of the house. So it's mixed in those blocks that have access to an alley.
But you're saying it's not going to come to traffic engineering. It's just be building permits.
Correct.
Because it's a private street, so they, it's not anything that the city's going to watch or-
Planning staff will review it and we have to approve all residential site plans, so we would have that opportunity to look at curb cut proposed locations.
Okay.
There, there just won't be a right of way permit.
Yeah, no right of way and, and not traffic engineering. So if you wanted to keep it, I would recommend changing the department to the planning department, um, or allow them the liberty to choose either the alley or the street frontage, if, if that is the desire of the commission.
Mr. Valles, you need to add to your motion since we have a PUD.
So am I making a motion approved, subject to revising condition seven, to be approved by planning and not traffic engineering?
On the PUD, the findings of fact need to be adopted and condition number four on the PUD amended or removed.
So moved.
Would, would condition number nine need to be?
I think we need to appoint Richard to the planning commission. Is that? Maybe that was item number 14 you forgot to go over on the agenda?
That was in the resolution she read. It's going to be a member.
Does item number nine need to be included, too? Um, because it refers to the limited to one curb cut.
Well, it only limits it to curb cut, the number of curb cuts, and it doesn't say it has to be approved by either traffic engineering or planning.
Okay.
But we know the traffic engineering is not going to make comments, so it shouldn't be in the language, being that it's a private street.
So I'm moving for approval of the PUD, subject to staff recommendations and adopting of the findings of fact.
And eliminating condition number four on, on the PUD.
Correct, eliminating item number four.
And number nine?
Well, that's the same comment he had previously on nine.
Four and nine.
Just remove all references to curb cuts.
Or traffic engineering comments.
Mr. Valles, is that your motion?
Yes.
It is.
I'll second that motion.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Alright, number 13.
No, I'm going to need some help on this one.
650 and 686, Wright Forest Drive.
Garage park.
This is a rezoning, but it's basically a downzoning.
No, 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 hold on. What, are we on 13?
Yeah.
Here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so this is the access to the property that currently doesn't have access and they're asking for a tr- street stop, but it appears they connect where there's a large wetland area.
Yeah, the law does not require this property owner, the applicant, to provide that access to landlocked property. Um, even if he was under some obligation with that wetlands there, it'd prob- apparently be physically, um, impossible. The law does allow the landlocked property owner, and I think we discussed this last time, under private condemnation, to condemn a, a right of way to the most convenient public right of way, um, as determined by the judge or, or, or an appraiser. Um, so, uh, there is that act, if the gentleman who's landlocked, who is here, um, if he could possibly get a condemned access up to Maggie Drive, um, maybe through the apartments to Lloyd's Lane. So there are, are options for him to legally get access.
I don't know, the applicant wasn't here. No, I got some phone calls because the sign went out on Gervy. But these are single family homes. People were concerned about more apartments being, and it technically is, a portion of the land is zoned R3, I think, but it's, would be all downzoned to the R2.
So, so the best case scenario I see is that they are providing that Maggie Drive to the acres to the north. So that property could get developed now that it has access, and when it's developed, we would require connectivity to this five acres. But that's not giving him access today unless he went through the condemnation, but it is kind of a light at the end of the tunnel.
Well, the, the thing to remember, though, Mr. Valles, is that this is a private road. So, you know, but, let me get back to-
Rick is correct. That's not a, a public right of way, but a judge could still grant access through this private road. It would be, uh, the owner of that private road, i.e. the property owners association, I guess, who's responsible for it, would receive compensation through that private condemnation for this gentleman's, uh, use of that access.
As I pointed out to Mr. Anderson just a moment ago, another option for access to the property in question, the gentleman that spoke, his property is right here. This property immediately adjacent to the east has an access out to Lloyd's Lane that would potentially provide a more direct access to a publicly maintained right of way.
It's owned by the same group.
I'm sorry?
And it's owned by the same group as this applicant.
It is, but to some degree, that's not relevant in going through a condemnation for access.
A question for George. This is outside of access point with regard to the drainage. Has the engineer had any conversations with you concerning this site? I mean, this is obviously a very challenging site to develop, so I'm just curious if he's talked to you, if we conveyed to him, uh, you know, stormwater requirements, you know, for this site. It seems that we, we talked about 100-year, two-year design.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, I think they have submitted revised landesturban's permit drawings where they revised it to the 100-year, two-year as required for this area.
Okay. I, I, for the sake of the commission, this downstream of this, uh, we've had issues, you know, with a culvert bend, uh, blown out in a large rain event, so that's the reason we went to the stricter design standard.
I have a question. The vacant land that's now landlocked, that's zoned R3, correct? And you're saying that a judge would allow or, or require that that private road now become a conduit for?
The, the way the statute reads is that, uh, i- if you go through a private condemnation, uh, the probate judge, uh, is able to condemn a right of way through the most convenient means. That's, that's the word, not the most, the shortest, the closest, it's the most convenient. So a judge could, uh, grant an easement across that private road, just like he could create a new easement on a property owner to the west, the south, or the north. And like Rick said, I, just looking at it on this map, it looks like the property to the west, the back of that apartment complex would be the most convenient, but we don't have all the facts.
But we're not creating a landlocked parcel by doing this because that looks like it was already-
We're not creating, it's already been created.
That's what I'm saying. Some, I mean, it's- Yeah, yeah, so it's-
It, it looks like the property also is, uh, I mean, the parcel that we're talking about that have access, it looks like it's got a pretty extreme topography with it. I don't know if it shows up as wetlands in the wetland inventory, but it's, in all likelihood, that, that, that's what it is. I mean, it, it just, my point is that it, it does not look to be too developable, you know, or anything else other than what it, what it currently is.
And that's the land closer to Lloyd's Lane than the Southland Drive. There's, I mean, I see parcels- mean, I see parcels, but the gentleman that came down was talking about the site to my, I, I'll say left, I don't know, north, south, left. West, correct? It's a big piece of land.
Unless you're heading east and left is north.
Don't confuse me.
Someone make a motion.
I just have a quick question, and maybe it's, it's for engineering, but, is, is, is this too dense of a, a development, or, or do y'all have confidence that measures will be taken to help prevent the, you know, kind of potential impacts on the culvert and other stuff and whatnot?
That was the reason for the question about the, about the, the design standard, going to a 100-year storm event with a two-year release, that's about as extreme as we can be, basically, all the water that will be created from the site will be, will be held and released at a, I had to call it a trickle, but a very slow, slow amount, so it's, yeah, it's better for the watershed than it is holding more water back. Yeah, I'm, I might be speaking for the group, and I sound a little disappointed that applicant's not here, with this being as complicated of a, a site as it is, I think we all may have had some other, other questions for him, you know, and, and that, I'm going to make a motion to hold over.
If y'all have questions, hold it up.
Yeah, I really-
I'm going to move to hold over.
Absolutely.
I mean, there's a lot of common areas, that means these, these residents are going to have to maintain a lot of common space on there, that's part of the subdivision, a very sensitive area.
I'm assuming that's all wetlands.
Yeah, I'm going to move the whole order to April, April 19.
Second.
Well, now, would this one be, since we did hear it, state code and all?
I, I think-
It's called over two weeks.
Two weeks or two meetings?
Till, till the fifth, right?
Technically, it's, it's longer than 30 days, till the, to April 19.
The first meeting, maybe?
So then April 5, okay, April 5.
Move holder, April, to April the 5th.
Yeah, and if the applicant could get word that, it would be nice, especially when there's concerns about land, other landlocked property.
I think based on the discussion, we can include something in the letter decision that it's held over so that the applicant can attend the meeting?
Yeah.
Or at least have representation at the meeting?
Yeah.
Page 130, Traffic Row. Any opposed? Thank you very much, and now we're going to number 14. I'm sorry.
That's a-
It's late while you keep looking for 14. Call us when you find it.
I just assumed there was at least one more, the committee.
Madam Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank both the commission and Mr. Anderson for your kind words. Somebody is majored in creative writing, I have thoroughly enjoyed my career with the city, I have to admit, there have been ups and downs, but overall, it's been a great run, and I say this about every commission, but I truly mean it this time, and I have it every time before, I think we have one of the best commissions, if not the best, that we have had in my tenure with the city, so I appreciate all of y'all, and Mr. Anderson for putting up with my sometimes stupid questions.
And he ends every conversation the last month, but I'm not going to miss y'all at all.
Not true.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. For your kind words about, maybe you could- We're going to miss you.
He's going to be afraid of her.
Maybe do come with me.
Hop to half.